Good evening, Winthrop. And welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of August 17th, 2021. It is 7:00 PM and we are in the Winthrop Hobby Room. And we are also on Zoom. The number to join us on Zoom for public hearings and public comment is 1-301-715-8592, with an ID number of 836-8000-1893, and pound. Please try to join us for public comment. I will give you the number again at that time. As I said, we are on Zoom. This meeting was officially opened at 6:15. We were in executive session until 6:45. But we are now going to recall the roll call and formally open this part of the meeting.
Counsel Regero. Counsel Flahcutt.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Littary.
Yeah.
Counsel Honig.
Here.
Counsel LaConti. Counsel Prino.
Yeah.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here. There being a quorum, I will call the regular meeting to order. And I would ask Counsel DiMarco to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Dolores Hickey. She is the mother of harbor master Art Hickey and Officer Dennis Hickey. She's been very active in the town for many years. So please take a moment of silence for Dolores Hickey. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 3rd, 2021 meeting?
Motion.
Motion to be made by Vice President Christopher and seconded by Counsel Littary. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Are there any additions to the minutes? Are there any deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are accepted. Under general information and recommendations, I know you're going to do it under your town manager's report probably, but I'd like to call on Meredith to give us an update as to COVID situation because I've heard that we have got a little bit of a spike over the past half a month that is not good.
Sure, let me. I think what I have to do is log into the Zoom so that you guys can see. And then I will...
Meredith, if I could just also ask you to come over here.
Oh, sure.
The microphones won't capture you from here. And I'll be moving right out of your way. Thank you.
No pressure, Meredith.
Sorry, guys. I was actually just pulling it up. All right. Just getting into my Zoom.
We got some very valuable information on the health situation in town last night at the school committee meeting. But I want to make sure that people that are watching the town meeting know what's going on as well.
Just as Meredith's pulling that up, I think it's important to also inform the council that late last week, we did issue a policy for all town employees that they would have to be masked unless they fell under two exceptions. One is being fully vaccinated and the other one, if they have certified, bona fide medical condition that doesn't allow them to mask. Meredith Hurley is the point person on any correspondence for the medical issues, as well as ensuring people are vaccinated and that they will be masked. And that's a result of two different departments having infections around the same time that they weren't together. It was separate infections, separate sources.
And that takes place immediately?
That took place, yes, Meredith. They issued it last Thursday, I believe, when I was on vacation.
So we should probably, everybody should provide their vaccination card on the council if you are fully vaccinated.
I would just ask everyone to provide it, Meredith. In this way, the HIPAA requirements and confidentiality is maintained.
Yeah, so we're here.
And you guys, everybody uses a town email, right?
Yes.
Okay, because we have it set to a Google Drive so that you can just upload it so that it's a little bit neater and cleaner for HIPAA. Before you share, Meredith, I'm going to stop the录音 and restart it because none of the public are coming through. Oh, okay. Saying they're waiting for us to start even though you've done. See? Probably just scared she's playing again and... Oh, yeah.
Hey, John.
Recording in progress.
That's good.
We need a wider angle camera.
Are we getting people now coming in on Zoom?
They're coming through now.
It's a baby.
I want you to say...
Again, the number to call in is 1-301-715-8592. For some reason, we had no one. Now I see we have about 15 or so people that have come on. The ID number is 836-8000-1893, pound. And I believe we have about 15 participants now. We should be all right.
Better than zero.
Yes.
As well, Meredith is looking, I believe you're looking to put this up?
Yes. I have to get back into the meeting.
While she's putting that up, I think the keynote is that we've had like maybe 20 a month at the most for the past few months. And then all of a sudden this month, in the first half of the month, we've had 40 positive tests. So that is not very good. And people are not being vaccinated. I would assume that we're having those positive tests. So please try to get vaccinated. They're vaccinating people daily at CVS. As a matter of fact, I was at CVS there to pick up a prescription. I saw two or three youngsters, including Lisa Howard with her son, getting their vaccinations. The children, the 12-year-olds vaccinated. So, I mean, it's available. It's there. It's free. Get yourself vaccinated.
I think, Mr. President, I think the one thing that people want to know is of the 40 people who tested, how many of them were, you know, fully vaccinated? You know what I mean? I think people are going to want to know that.
I think that we have that information.
Me too.
Just a reminder to the council, those mics are directional. So if you guys speak, this makes you get fallen down in front of you. But the mic from them to CDT doesn't call you mom.
I don't think anybody's going to have an issue hearing me.
Okay. I think I'm good now. Just one sec. Okay, there we go. Okay. So here are our latest updates as Council President Boncory preface. So yes, in the last about 15, 14 days, we've had 45 cases. So this is where we were laying. This has been since March 20th. You'll see that obviously our highest case counts, over 500 in December, over 400 in January. And then we saw our market decrease. In May, we saw about 30. In June, we saw 13. July, we were back up to 30. And currently, we sit at about 45, just for the month of August.
For half a month.
Yeah, for half the month. So kind of at that pace, we are where we were in August 20th already last year, as you can see. What you'll see is the orange bars. That's, that was my screen that I showed last night at the school committee. So those are just school-aged children. So we can kind of ignore that for the context here. So this is just a trend of the 14-day case counts followed by the number of tests. So as our case counts dropped, so didn't the tests. And now we're seeing that start to climb also. And one question that we always have is where are we in terms of percent positives? Again, we were dropping, dropping, dropping. And around July 14th, we started to see this increase. Right now, our percent positive sits around 2.3%. We were in the 5 to 10 range for a while this winter. So, you know, we're not, we're not panicking. We're not, we're not in crisis mode. But it's definitely, it's caught my attention.
We're going in the wrong direction. And as general information and recommendations, I would appreciate you telling them where they can get tested.
Sure.
And where they can get shots because that's what I think our job is to do, get them.
For sure. So what, I've been sending a lot of people to Beth Israel in Chelsea, right on Broadway. They're still open for walk-ups. Lynn Project Beacon is still open. They, like a lot of people, have reduced down their staff. So people are saying that it's taking three, four, five days to make an appointment at Project Beacon, whereas people used to be able to, on demand, kind of make the appointments. So if that's the case, I'm encouraging people to go to Beth Israel. Beth Israel Deaconess in Chelsea on Broadway. They're turning around their tests pretty quickly. East Boston is also still doing tests. It takes about 48 hours for their tests to come back because they're still using Quest, which is what they've consistently been doing.
Is Project Beacon right there by Walmart?
There's one by Walmart right there that is also free, but it's not Project Beacon. But they're, they've been good with getting their test results back also. That's also a PCR site. It's free. It's easy. Project Beacon is up just like one more block, too. So I think that there, I was getting confused because I was going a little out when I was getting tested regularly. In terms of vaccines, where our CVS here in Winthrop has been able to accommodate most people, I've only had one person tell me that they had run out of vaccines for that day. I'm sure it's because they're only defrosting a certain amount. So they are, you don't have to make an appointment. It's walk-in. I even think, you can go on the MassVac site. Some people want Johnson &amp; Johnson. Some people only want Pfizer. Some people want Moderna. And you can search by what your preference is for vaccine on the MassVac site. There's plenty of, there's plenty of locations around us. I've also made a request to the state for a mobile vaccine unit to come in the week, the last week of August to see if we can capture some of the kids. Some people still feel more comfortable staying with, within the community versus going into a CVS or things like that, which we're trying to, we're trying to accommodate that as well. Here are the age counts by, the case counts by age and by month. This was, you know, what we were kind of looking at last night at the, at the school committee meeting. There really hasn't been a consistent trend showing itself just in the last couple of months in terms of, it seems to fluctuate month by month in terms of ages of those. Here are vaccine percentages by age. So our, our lowest age group of vaccines has been the 12 to 15. But there are also the group that was the most recently eligible. So that's not surprising. Taking that out, it's still confusing to me why the 50 to 64-year-olds are the lowest of the fully vaccinated for the town, with the exception of, you know, youth under the age of 19. That's one that we're kind of, we're trying to look at and engage what the resistance is at this point because truthfully, this is resistance. Like this is not, not having access. This is not, you know, knowing where to go. This is truthfully resistance that we're, that we're, that we're seeing right now. So that is kind of the gist. Also, I didn't put up on the slide. So I was kind of working on it tonight right before I came here. About 35 of our cases so far this month have been what we call breakthrough. In later June, we, we were seeing about 17% breakthrough. So the first, the first breakthrough case that was noted in my system was March 29th, was an asymptomatic resident in their 80s. And now we're seeing breakthrough kind of across all ages, across... Some people are fairly symptomatic. Some people are asymptomatic. I had a 79-year-old resident who, I spoke to their spouse today, asymptomatic, was swabbed going into an inpatient unit. I also spoke with another resident in their 20s, symptomatic, and had been vaccinated for a while. So I can't figure out the rhyme or reason just yet to it. I know that in the coming days, it seems like the FDA is going to approve the third doses. So whether this is breakthrough from a variant being driven or if it's, if it's that the vaccines get, are wearing off, for lack of a better term, like as people are more vaccinated. Because we are seeing a fair amount of people in their 60s to 80s breaking through. And they were kind of the first group that was eligible in the general population. So there's still a lot of questions about it.
So, Mr. President.
Have a question.
Yeah, Meredith, so to be clear, so there's 40-something-plus cases so far this month, and 35 of them are vaccinated individuals? Is that accurate?
No, 38%, 35%.
35%?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Big difference.
Good question.
Are these people with underlying problems?
Some are and some aren't. Mm-hmm. The, you know, the, the struggle has also been, you know, after May, the Commonwealth ramped down the contact tracing collaborative, who we were leaning on significantly with the idea that they would be eradicated, they would be done, kind of, in September. We were all notified, like, you know, we're going to be going away. But then this kind of, now they're re-ramping up. Unfortunately, they didn't tell us that. They didn't have, like, staff still in place. So they're ramping up at the same time. So, so today, for example, we had eight, six cases reported today. So, you know, I don't think that we're going to eradicate COVID necessarily. I think we're just going to kind of watch it ebb and flow.
Okay. Any other council questions?
Just one quick question. So you said about 35% are breakthrough, so people that have been vaccinated. Is there any percentage or is it zero of people who have had COVID before that have tested positive again?
That's a great question. I have not seen any reinfection. So that's what we call the subsequent testing of positive. So there were some suspected earlier in, in the course of COVID, whether they were, what we now know are long haulers or if there are folks that were, were re-infected with COVID. So we haven't seen any reinfection so far in any of my investigations here.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Meredith. I appreciate that because I want the word out to the people that there is still COVID out there. And, you know, protect yourself and protect the ones you love and protect the ones you don't love. Get yourself vaccinated if you haven't. Let's get to 90%. Thank you.
Thanks, Meredith.
Okay. We have three public hearings. There are four on the agenda, but I believe one has been tabled. So I will now open the first public hearing. First public hearing is fiscal year-end budget transfers.
You take the, Terry, take the...
I'll take it. So we did meet on this, this evening in Finance Committee. The first discussion here is considering fiscal '21 year-end budget transfers. This is a normal procedure done every year to alleviate any fund balances that were negative for fiscal '21. Stuff like snow and ice that always, you know, we put in a certain amount every year. It's a, it's a, an account that we have the ability to run in the negative. We're allowed to, but at the end of the year, we want to bring that back to zero. So that is one that's on there constantly. And there also Assistant CFO Robbie Powers did a great job in cleaning out a lot of the special articles that we had. So this also takes account for a lot of the special articles that were older special articles that had a small balance. And there were some older special articles that had a negative balance. So that's not allowed. So we use the ones that had a positive balance to zero them out and to also zero out the, the few special articles that had a negative balance. So in totality, this comes out to about $118,160.15. Normal procedure, so this is just taking money from accounts with a balance to offset accounts which are short or accounts or old special articles. We did discuss this. Assistant CFO Powers was at the meeting. We had some questions for him. He answered them exactly what we expected. And we did come out, which we will discuss in Old Business, with a positive recommendation to pay these.
Okay. Is there any council that wants to be heard in the public hearing? Is there any member of the audience that wants to be heard in public hearing, either in person or on Zoom? Is there any hands up on Zoom for public hearing on year-end budget transfers? Seeing no hands? All right. I will close this public hearing and we will move the issue to New Business. Okay, the next one that's on the agenda is to transfer $147,000 from the capital stabilization to the general fund. That motion has been tabled at the request of the maker of it. And the next one is that the town council accept the SRF funding for $9.9 million for the Ingleside Park project. I know this was something that came before us and was put onto this public hearing. I think Steve Cowell talked on it last meeting. Who's bringing this up? Are you bringing this up, Terry, or is...
I'll take it. So, and then Terry can add if he'd like. So the, this public hearing is for a, the ability of the town to receive an SRF grant from the state in the amount of $9.94 million. This would be to address an issue that the town has seen over many years of regarding flooding at Ingleside Park. So this was a, a project that was looked at three to five years ago. And the town was, looked at different options. They were given a price. And I think the price at the time was somewhere in the $11 to $13 million range. This has been adjusted somewhat. The town had the ability to apply to get into line, basically, for SRF funding. There were two projects that the town was looking at at the time. One was Morton Street, which is an extremely worthy project with flooding problems down there that really affects a lot of residents. And then there was this project at Ingleside Park. The town was not ready at the time to go into the SRF funding process for the Morton Street project. So they chose to go in for the Ingleside Park project. Basically, what this project would do is it would, it would establish an underground storage tank roughly, I'm not sure exact, roughly somewhere between 1 and 2 million gallons, storage capacity. It would also establish a pumping station. So what happens now is the town's in the middle of doing the Center Business District project where we've increased the diameter of the drainage pumps, of the drainage pipes going through the center dramatically from roughly 18-inch to 48-inch pipes. So now we're just getting that much water that quicker out of the center, but it's going into Ingleside Park. And we're always going to have a problem when the tide is full. When the tide is full, there's no place for the water to go. So the thought process is this would have the capacity to store a million and a half or whatever gallons of water underneath, basically where the baseball field is. And then when the tide goes down, it would pump it out and get it out quicker. We had a lot of questions on this. First of all, you know, we as a committee thought that the first thing is the effect on ratepayers for water and soil because this, this is not a grant. This is a loan. I think it's a 2% loan. We could pay it back over 20, 25, 30 years. Depending on the amount of time we would pay it back, it would have that different effect on the water rate. Basically, in, in simple terms, to the best of our calculations, is this would increase the water rate somewhere between $1.15 and $1.40. In percentage terms, that means somewhere around 4% to 7, 7.5%. We also asked for some sort, if they were going to do a pumping station and an underground facility, is there some sort of maintenance plan in place? Because we would have to take care of this after the fact. We did not receive adequate feedback on that. And this is something, again, that we, we were, we were next in line. There was another municipality that had the opportunity for an SRF funding grant, loan. They chose not to accept it, so it came to us. Now, the town has 30 days to decide on a $10 or $11 million project. The other item we asked is if this 9.9 would completely fund the project. We were told no. It would, more than likely, we would have to do the engineering and then look at any maintenance agreements and then look into replacement of baseball field as such because that's not included in the plan. So then we're thinking that this now, instead of a 9.9 million, could be an $11 or $12 million project. We just did not think at this time, with the ratepayers and all the issues that we've had with water rates and the increase in water rates, that the town would have an appetite for or we really have the money to do right now. So this is going to come back in Old Business with a unanimous negative recommendation for now. We appreciate having the opportunity to do this, but we just did not, we did not, as a committee, feel it was in the best interest of the town to take this burden on right now. So we are going to come back with a negative recommendation.
Okay, the Finance Committee is coming back with a negative recommendation. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the project? This is a public hearing on the project. Okay, is there any councils that want to speak? Other than the Finance Committee? Yes, all right, Council.
Given the report, that I think it was just in the paper, that the, within the next 10 years, less actually, we expect the tide to be up considerably more because of the way the moon and the tides are going to be. And we're likely to have much more serious flooding in Ingleside Park. Is this wise to not do this project?
Well, I think it's wise not to do the project. I mean, I can't speak for, for the rest of the councilors. I could just speak for what the committee did. When the tide is full, it's going to flood. And we estimate that it floods somewhere around a dozen to two dozen times a year, that it's substantial enough that it has an impact on Walden Street, has an impact, obviously, on the, on the, on the park. And that will continue to happen. Even though there is more capacity underground now, just the fact that the pipes are that much wider, they could hold that much more water. So it might back up a little bit, but there is more capacity. We did not go over the increase in tides over the next 10 years. This is a 10, probably an $11 or $12 million project. If, if, if we were able to have the project on Morton Street that affects a lot of homeowners and people have been displaced, we've had homes that are basically ruined from flooding, I think we would have been much more sympathetic to this and hope, and probably taken more, more chance to take advantage of. But Terry?
Just, just on Counsel...
Counsel DiMarco had his hand up first.
That's okay. I, I, I'll, I'll see, I'll see the town manager.
I want to make a point on Counsel Flahcutt's comments. So the water on Ingleside Park and Walden Street is not flood inundation. It's from the lack of being able to push the water through our drainage pipes out of Donovan's Beach while there's a high tide, unlike Morton Street and Pico where there is flooding and inundation. So that we did discuss and consider that.
I, I just wanted to ask Counsel Littary through, through the president. The, it sounds like we have grant money of 9-point-something million or no?
It's a loan.
It's a loan.
Potential. It's a 2% loan of 9.945 million. It would require additional funding of 1 to 2 to 3 million that we do not have.
That we do not have.
We go on your water bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this is going to come up for the council's vote. But is there anyone in the public audience who would like to speak on this? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you.
Identify yourself, even though I just did...
Jack Dowd, Precinct 3. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I work with an engineer that designs projects like this. And she told me that Ingleside Park, as a matter of fact, the whole... Park, as a matter of fact, the whole center area from Buchanan Street to Lincoln Street is in a flood control area. So if you have a 10-year, 20-year, 50-year, 100-year storm with saturated ground, it's going to flood. An underground tank would essentially be a bucket of water, take a gallon, a 2-gallon bucket of water, and you fill a shot glass with water, and you put it inside that tank. So no matter what, a certain storm will not alleviate the problem that we have in this flood control area. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Eileen Collins.
Stand up and identify yourself.
Eileen Collins. I'm just wondering if the center project with the pipes, you said the pipes are wider and everything, is that going to make the park worse than it is right now? Make it flood more? Because that would be a concern. You know what I mean? It's helping the center, but is it making the other end worse?
Can you hear the answer?
I think the thought process is, instead of having an 18-inch pipe rushing water down, now it's a 48-inch pipe rushing water. So the water will get there quicker and with more force. It also has the capability to hold more water in those 48-inch pipes. So it's a catch, you know, it's dependent on the tide. When the tide, I don't think you're going to see increased flooding. You know, when the tide is high, it's going to flood. I don't think it's going to flood, you know, into the Pillar House project, into the Pillar House apartments anymore. I don't think it's going to affect homes in the area, but it is going to flood. I don't think any more than it is now.
Okay, I'm more concerned about the other, between Palmyra and Brooklyn.
Right. No, I do not think so. My thoughts.
One more statement, please?
Go ahead.
People asked a question, Jack Dowd, Precinct 3. People asked the question, these oversized pipes, the infrastructure for stormwater in the center is a very good idea. People asked the question, and it's answered in the supplemental papers for the 2 million gallon tank that was proposed a couple of years ago. So there was a supplement to that. And it states in that supplement that the new pipes in the center are not connected or have nothing to do with the flooding on Ingleside Park. If you read the supplement, you'll understand it. So people want to ask the question, these new pipes that are underground, stormwater pipes, connected to any pipe that leads out to Donovan's Beach. I hope someone can answer that question at the next town council meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I did go, of course, Mr. Calle could answer that if he was here.
The next meeting, somebody will have to answer for that. Thank you.
Correct. Anyone in the audience want to speak on this issue? Diane, you're on.
We need volume.
I think, did you guys hear me?
Yeah, Diana.
Okay. Hey, hey, everyone. This is Diana P. M. Just real quick, I think that this is a huge amount of money. It is a loan. It is not a grant. It is a loan that we will have to pay back. It will raise our water bill, which no one has an appetite for. I hope everyone knows that by now. And it's actually going to cost more than the loan amount, right? So it's a low-interest loan that's going to raise our water bill to pay back the 9.9 million dollars, and we're having to get rid of the ferry. And then we're going to tack on however many million dollars that is, that is required to complete the project. And we don't actually have it scoped out in present-day times. And as Jack said, it's probably not, I mean, this, this really needs hard evidence and thought from an engineer who's on our side and not trying to sort of unload a, you know, a potential low-interest loan that other towns have passed on, because it's actually just something that other towns don't want to take on as a liability either. So it would be pretty silly in my view for us to now take on this, this huge debt, when we're talking about getting rid of other stuff that we can't afford at the same time that's always second.
Thank you, Diana. Is there another person? I see Wendy Page, I believe. Wendy, you're on if you're-
Wendy, well, first, I know it's not Q and A, but for the youth, looking out behind the old middle school that consistently floods, is this going to have an impact on anything we do in terms of trying to get an RPL and such for the building? Would this have mitigated some of that water there?
So, yes, this project would mitigate the water in Ingleside Park and behind the middle school, and the, and, and some of the area over across by Palmyra and the ditch area. So, yeah, this project would mitigate those, those areas.
Potentially. But we can't specifically tell you how much, because I think only Steve really has that information, Mr. Calle.
You know, I think, you know, when you do an application, you don't do a full engineering set for the application. That comes, and that's, that's part of the, 9.9 cannot be used for any engineering costs. So those are additional costs that Jim talked about earlier. So just so everyone understands the process, you're not going to pay 100, 200,000 dollars to fully engineer a project to submit an application.
All right, hopefully that answers your question, Wendy. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on the 9.9 million dollars of the Ingleside project, and that will be voted on under Old Business. Okay, the next public hearing is on a group petition that we received, and the town council has received a group petition to temporarily suspend the removal of any public shade tree not posing a clear and imminent danger to safety, and number two, require any other tree removal deemed potentially hazardous and subject to possible removal to be addressed at a public hearing in conjunction with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 87, Emergency Tree Removal Hearing. Further to this emergency tree removal hearing, any citizen objection to removal of said public shade tree shall be subject to review by an independent arborist with written recommendation of the same to be made publicly available prior to any action. Both these temporary measures will expire upon the adoption and implementation of a Winthrop tree ordinance. This is a public hearing. They had the necessary signatures to bring it to the council for a public hearing, and we are committed to have a hearing on it and to take some action. The action I'm intending to do is to send it to the Rules and Ordinance Committee, who has been working on a tree ordinance, and hopefully we'll have one soon. But in the meantime, for next meeting, I would send this to the committee. But this is the public hearing on that petition. 10 people on that petition were notified. Diana, who was just on the line, do you want to be heard on this? Were you the top signature on this? Diana, are you still online?
She's on, but she doesn't have her hand up. I'm near you.
Okay. Any of the other 10 people that were notified, or any of the signers of this petition online wishing to be heard?
Yes. Hi, this is Maryam Regan-Fury. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Well, thank you for entertaining this in such timely manner. This petition reflects the growing concern, the continued loss of tree canopy in Winthrop, and the resulting harm to the health and vibrancy of our community. I do want to, you know, before I get into my comments, just acknowledge and applaud the efforts of councillors Honan and Christopher and all those who are working on a tree ordinance. We're hoping that will be a good jumping off point to address the concerns and start restoring our canopy. But in the meantime, you know, we, the 90-plus voters who signed this petition, are requesting this temporary pause. And, you know, if something that's debatable, a tree has to come down, that, you know, we have the hearing, we engage the, an arborist and expert to evaluate, but in any situations, we are, you know, they're, they're is subject to debate. And this is being requested, you know, should there be a delay in adopting the tree ordinance? We're hoping it's right around the corner, but things happen. So this would, you know, kind of just let everyone take a deep breath. And it's really meant to not just preserve the tree canopy we have left, but also to, you know, address concerns that have come up with the transparency in the process and, and put some confidence in the process. So, you know, we do hope that the council will consider adopting this, and hopefully it would be very short-lived, because it's only temporary until the tree ordinance is in place.
Thank you, Maryam. Is there anyone else that is a signer of the petition that would like to be heard? Any of the other 10 that were notified of this public hearing? Okay, anyone in the public audience here? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you. Jack Dowd. In the tree warden's handbook, Chapter 87, Section 4, is a rule that pertains to cutting down a tree. If one person writes a letter to any councillor or any, you know, the head of government here, then it's required, and the verbiage may be outdated, but it's required that, it's no longer in the hands of the tree warden, because it hands up either the selectman or the mayor. Now, we don't have that type of government, but I would assume that-
We'll go to town council.
We'll go to town council. So there already is a law in, in the book that states what you have to do in order to cut down a tree. If you don't want to cut down a tree, one letter to the council, then, then it's before the council. You can come to a public meeting, everybody knows what's going on, and then you, you can make a decision after hearing from people that are concerned about the cutting of the tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. I see there are two other hands that are signers of the petition. Diana, you're on again?
You have to turn it up for her.
Diana?
Okay, okay. No, I just echo what Maryam has said. Also, right now, there's a lot of ambiguity and not a lot of talking about why trees are being cut down. And this is just temporary, so, until you give it a look, please. You know, as Maryam said, this is for lift, and it's, it's really to bring transparency and protect the needed in lieu of the ordinance in place while we are, we are putting that ordinance in place. So absolutely necessary and short-lived, a small price to pay, if that, I don't even think it's a price to pay, but it, it will put a lot of people's minds at ease, especially in terms of climate conditions that we're facing right now.
Thank you, Diana. Is there someone on the hand? I see?
Yes. Hold on.
It's Kurt.
You can breathe then?
Go ahead.
My eyes are still there.
Hello. I hope you all can hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to just, probably just bring to light, I think the tree canopy in town really needs to be looked at. I think it's important. But from my understanding of what was read, is that we're asking, they'd be asking for a, an arborist to come in, who's generally have to pay for, to make the assessment. So I think if we were to temporarily put something like this in place, we'd need to find funding on how we get something like that paid for. And I know what the ordinance is coming about. Like I said, it might be short-lived, but again, as we're being cash-strapped right now, we do have the tree commission in place, and, and people responsible who rule up trees in our town on that committee to actually look at this with an open mind. And I do, I do feel that the public hearings are important to make sure those go forward. But again, I, I look at the maintenance of things and the, where in the budget, you know, paying for an arborist to come out to take a look at when people are requesting this. That's all.
Thank you. One other hand, I see up.
Carol.
You have Maryam Regan again?
Hi, it's Maryam Regan again. I just wanted to comment on a couple of the comments. One on the, you know, a hearing is required per, per Mass. General Law 87, and we do have a tree committee. The problem is that there haven't been a lot of meetings, or, let me put it another way. When this all came up, I had requested tree committee meetings for the last few years to kind of disprove that there's been a problem with trees being cut down, not in compliance in Mass. General Law 87. I'm just, you know, those could not be produced. There are no committee meetings since 2017 that could be produced. And maybe they just can't be produced, but, you know, according to the charter, any committee should have their minutes held by the Tom Clark or in the public library. And so, you know, there's a big question mark around the transparency. I know trees in my neighborhood were cut down maybe a year or two ago, and not all of them were posted. So, you know, that's why, that's the second part of this, is to just try to, you know, reset here and set path to go forward, so people feel confident. In terms of the cost of an arborist, Mr. Miller was absolutely correct. There is a cost to that. Based on what I could find, it's somewhere between 200 and 500 dollars. Hopefully, number one, this will be so temporary, and there'll be, you know, almost no trees that we have to get into a debate about, that there would not be a penny spent. However, you know, should that become an issue, I'm sure that people who signed this petition, and myself included, would be happy to look into private funding for, you know, a few hundred dollars for the one or two situations that may come up while we're waiting for the tree ordinance to get in place. So I just wanted to comment on those. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one other one? Or now we have more?
Two.
Two.
Kathleen.
Okay, Kathleen.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Kathleen, I can.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I, I love a tree. I love nature. It would be grossly irresponsible of the council to expend any monies on a supposed temporary basis before an ordinance may or may not be put in regarding trees. We are in trouble right now fiscally. I'm not sure if people are realizing that. The fact is, paying this much attention to trees and, you know, what we might expend is a little mind-blowing to me. And I would hope the council would absolutely not say, or vote, to expend money on a temporary basis, if you will, because the fact is, you don't know if it's going to be one or two trees within, you know, by the time an ordinance is or is not cast. It could be 50. You just don't know that. If, if COVID has taught us anything, is to plan for the unexpected. So I'm, I'm just calling to say, right now, we are not in a position in any way, shape, or form to be expending more money on trees.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, can we try to make sure everybody's kept to three minutes? Can we have a timer?
All right, we'll keep a timer. We have Marilyn.
Who's the next?
Hi, Marilyn Regan.
Hi, Marilyn.
Thank you.
How are you?
I know you. I'd just like to bring this back, and we're talking about spending money. The actual price of cutting down a tree might be more than consulting an arborist. I don't know how much it costs to take down a tree, especially some of these big trees that have been taken down. So it might actually save the town a little money by having the arborist instead of actually going through and taking the tree down and then removing the stump. And, you know, in terms of, even in terms of man-hours, it might save the town money. And as far as the town being fiscally strapped and us being in no condition, we are in no condition not to have trees with the way Logan Airport is expanding, with the stuff they are dumping on our heads now. So in terms of money, and you've got to think about our health and the people, you know, we have to breathe. So just think about the health problems that happen because of these-
So just think about the health problems what happened because of these trees. So we are on no condition not to have trees to protect our area. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anybody else have been heard?
Uh, Carol.
Carol.
Carol Tolmeyer.
Hey, thank you. Hi, Carol, you're on.
Yes. Yes, I can hear you, Carol.
Hi. Hi, yes, thank you, um, thank you for taking my, uh, my hand. Um, you know, one of the things that this petition is trying to accomplish, um, also, is to really, um, you know, cement a working relationship between the townspeople and the town government. Um, and to show, um, a degree of, you know, collaboration, um, working together and, um, developing that sense of trust, um, improving the transparency. So, you know, the growing number of concerned citizens are really feeling that they're being heard by the town government. Um, I think adopting this measure would certainly, um, go a long way in, in showing that. Um, so I think there's a lot here, um, value added to meet the eye than just, um, what's very important, our, our fiscal implications certainly, but as it's been brought out, you could actually save money. An arborist could say, you know, this tree can be salvaged by doing this rather than removing the whole tree and the stump, et cetera. Um, and, you know, just really bridge, um, the relationship with the people in the town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And that's what we hope to do. Uh, I don't see any other hands. I don't see anyone else in the audience. Any council want to speak on this this time? If not, I am going to refer this, uh, petition to the Rules and Ordinance Committee to come back at the next meeting with a recommendation on whether or not to approve this petition. And, uh, it will be on the next agenda under All Business, so we can just do it that evening. Okay? All right. Hearing no one else, I guess we close that hearing on the group petition. We will now open, uh, regular public comment. Anybody under regular public comment that would like to be heard?
Can I be first?
Thank you. Why not, Jack? Press all eight.
It's better. I wish that, uh, I was hoping that this one forty, one fifty-one Polynice Street response from the town attorney would be talked about, but obviously it's not. At a town forum, this response, this writing was commissioned by Phil Boncorby, and it was made public that night. Basically, it says that the town owns seven point five five acres to do what they please, according to the Cummings deed. The planning board has been, have been advocates of selling three point one four acres that they have described on maps. The planning board uses the GIS system. It's a geographic information system, and it's used mapping for the town and Winter's assessors office to establish, uh, the area that they want to promote for developers. Winter's version of GIS is CAI axis. On the front page, there's a disclaimer. If you look in the, uh, assessors' website, the disclaimer reads, I'll make it brief, on the first page, I guess. "We make no warranties regarding the accuracy or completeness of the data, and yet, the Winter Planning Board uses this information. I prefer that the town and the town council think about using the information provided by the much-talked-about and well-planned master plan." I'm going to read it. On the master plan, it mentions Ingleside Park. Ingleside Park, located adjacent to the Center Business District, offers over ten acres of green space and a range of recreational facilities. Ten acres. I'd like to know where this ten acres is laid out on a map. It's described in various, uh, documentation in the town. Open space plans and recreation plans are being ten point one acres and eleven acres. The reason why it's reduced from thirteen acres of the original, uh, Ingleside Park is because the right-of-way of the railroad was thirty feet, and then when they expanded Walden Street, they took another forty feet. That's what, that's what the loss is, uh, from thirteen acres to ten or eleven acres. So the master plan, green space, Ingleside Park. The master plan has had many detractors. Most notably, there's a definition. Most notably, former town council president Bob Drisco, who had screws drilled into the tires of his car. Another former town council president, Tom Riley, produced an audio phone message at another town forum that threatened his well-being. At a different council meeting here in this hobby room, Mr. Boncorby asked me what I would do with the property at Ingleside Park. The buildings. I replied, "Take the buildings down and plant grass." Doing this would give future generations some input of what's going to happen down there. After the meeting- Did you wait for her to say three minutes? After the meeting-
Go ahead, finish.
Outside these doors, Mr. Boncorby approached me and commented, "Jack, you and your grassy knoll." Everybody that knows history knows what the grassy knoll is. I don't have to go any further on that. I think you should, I think you owe me a com- uh, apology for that comment, Phil.
Okay.
One more, top of the page. "Mr. President, Boncorby, under your leadership for the last two years, the town has lost all of its top management. Ed Rodriguez was a assistant town manager and town planner. Town manager Austin Faison. Chief Financial Officer Anna Friedman. And Treasurer and Procurement Office Monica Ford. There was no one left to get rid of. Just you. Thank you."
Thank you. You owe me an apology for that, but that's okay. Let's move on. Is there anyone else in the public comment that is not political and is talking about issues of the town? Okay. Got a couple.
Karen, just unmute yourself.
Karen.
Hi, dear. Can you hear me?
Yes, Karen, we got you.
Um, I don't know who the sp- I'm sorry, Karen Shaw is precinct children. Um, I don't know who the sponsor was for the hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, but I just want to give my two cents on that. Uh, the police chief told the finance commission that accruals could be omitted for FY twenty-two because the FY twenty-one had only recently been audited. So I'll make that as a point. The other thing is, the sidewalk money, um, from what I understand, it can't come from opera funds. Um, many other cities and towns are doing it, so I don't know why we're not. And again, I don't know who I was handed, and I don't know who the sponsor was. As far as the Ingleside project is concerned, I'm only speaking for myself on a personal basis. If this bond is added to the current water rate at twenty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents per one hundred cubic foot, it puts us in a twenty-six to twenty-seven dollar rate per one hundred cubic feet. I, for one, as a homeowner of a two-family dwelling, cannot afford that much of an increase. We cannot keep passing increases on to the renters. Our daughter is a tenant, and I am sure we are not the only two-family in Winter that has a family member for a tenant. Based on my current water average usage of eighty-six hundred cubic feet per year, that would add three hundred and fifty dollars at a two-dollar increase and five hundred dollars at a three-dollar increase at my RE average bill of twenty-one hundred dollars a year. Please think about this project carefully before voting. Even if it takes the council to ask for more time before voting on this. Also, I had asked in July for discussion on bonding for new public safety building or fire station, so the consideration for bonding could be put on a November ballot. The time to add the ballot has come and gone, and there is still no talk on the project, or even if it's been referred back to the architect, case of boos, to even look at the middle school property on Polynice Street. You know what? I think this is a project that's just going to be discussed for another thirty years. I hate to be so negative, but I've been listening to it for thirty years, and I won't be around in thirty years to still hear the discussion, but everybody else will. Lastly, for the tennis courts in Miller Field, I believe the tennis court should remain under the town's control as before the demolishing of the previous courts. As to the naming of the courts back to the walls being a clean courts, that is up to the council to decide. The lock system should be the same as in Ingleside. The schools will have first priority during the school year for physical education classes and any other needs necessary. Last, the tennis in the spring will also be a priority over the townspeople using the courts. Signers will be posted, so there is no question on public usage. Miller Field as well can be under town control. Again, the schools will have unlimited usage for any school games, physical education, and any other needs necessary. There should be a revolving fund established to collect any and all fields, all fees, sorry, charged for field usage. There's going to come a time in five to eight years that the turf will need to be replaced, and I am sure the schools don't want that burden. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Karen. Next.
Uh, John Stanley.
Hi, John, you're on.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to, uh, speak to, uh, express my opposition to any further funding by the town, of the town ferry. I think that the fact that we've spent a half a million dollars of the taxpayers' money towards this speaks to the reason why we should stop it immediately. When this project first was conceived during town meeting days, it was put forth, uh, advocated for by a congressman from our district. It is a typical bridge-to-nowhere, pork-barrelled project. The whole idea was that we would get money to build a new town pier. We have that new town pier. Part of the condition of that is that we would run a ferry service, our attempt to run a ferry service, up to two years. If they were not successful, we were within our rights by the grant to start the ferry service, and we could keep, obviously, keep the bridge. That was the whole purpose, purpose of it. I think we've spent a lot of time not acknowledging that. That was a bridge to nowhere. That's pork-barrelled, uh, politics. We got what we wanted, which was a new pier, which was a new pier. Let's just leave it at that. Put no more money into that ferry boat. Stop it. Thankfully, stop it immediately. It was costing five thousand dollars a week. Actually, I don't know how we possibly even have any more reserves left in it. But as some of these speakers earlier has spoken, has spoken truth, we're, we're bleeding money in this town. To even, the, the idea of looking for more grants to keep a sinking project like that going, I think is foolishness. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next.
Ryan Banassar.
Ryan.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Ryan.
Hey. Um, so I'm, I'm new to this. Uh, my first, uh, listening of the meeting. Um, I recently moved to Winter, and, um-
Okay.
-I still have Connecticut license plates. I have a house in Connecticut, um, but I purchased condo in Winter. Um, and I've, I've been having some difficulty getting parking pass because I don't have Massachusetts plates. And, um, I've been trying to find a solution for people who have multiple residences in different states. And, um, I'm not sure if this is the place to bring that up, if there are solutions to that. Um, but I, I thought I'd give it a shot because I haven't gotten any responses via email, and the police station tells me that there's no solution to, to my sort of problem.
So, yes, there was a, uh, you contacted Mike Deluiso? He's our parking clerk. Can find his email.
I contacted him, yeah.
And did you ask for an exemption, treasurer's exemption?
Um, I have, I'll, I've, I've not lose words. He's, he has not responded to me recently, so I can certainly send him another email, keep trying.
Please do, and I'll talk to him in the morning.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Ryan. Welcome to town. We're lucky to have you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, is there anyone else in the community that you want to talk? Did you want to speak?
Yeah, Paul Renikas from, uh, Center Street, Down Street. Every reason how you don't know, precinct lawyer. I was going to mention two things that like came up. Is, uh, one about the people leaving town and who may be responsible for it or not. I don't know. I don't care, but people come and go all the time. It's not just in this town, it's everywhere. You know, he's been going on for thirty years, people come and go. Anyway, so I don't know if you're to blame or not. I'm not going to make that decision. Two is the ferry real short. Yeah, goodbye. I think we should get rid of it. Save time here. The real reason I'm here tonight is the flag issue. Is that thing still alive?
There is a flag ordinance is being proposed by the-
I watched some of it, the three councils I put together on Facebook, and I pretty much heard most of it, of all of it. Uh, I don't know what the hell is going on here. I mean, this is nothing but trouble. First of all, your town manager, who has nothing else to do, I'm sure, they're going to make sure it's approved or not. Now, he's going to say, oh, flag X, the flag is great. The next town manager is going to come in, oh, flag X? No, no, we can't have that in town. You're just kicking the can down the road. And then there are going to be some flags that, I will mention two episodes here. Now, I don't care what certain people do. I don't care if you're gay or not. You had a pride gay flag. Great. Does that mean you're going to tell the straight pride people you cannot put a flag up? Now you start picking on one group, protecting another. I mean, it just, it just, it just doesn't make sense to me. And also, if there was a situation not around here, somewhere else in the U.S., that they put up an Israeli flag for, uh, for the Jewish people in town, they requested it. Well, all of a sudden, black light baddies came out, they were protesting. The Palestinians said, "You hate us, you're killing us, you took Palestine." The BLM people just said that recently. Do we need to go there? I mean, what is we, well, my, my opinion is this. That flag, the Jewish flag, yes. State flag, yes. Now, I don't know if you have official, uh, fire flags or police flags. I'm not talking about the black, white, and with the red, with the blue flag. How about the original flag?
With the seal patches on them, yes.
Yeah, stuff like that. Yeah, put those up. After that, you cross the line, you're asking for trouble. Now, some of this stuff I, I saw in that, uh, Rules Committee, uh, thing, yeah, it made sense, but I don't think we need it. Um, I just, I think you're asking for trouble. What, now, I'm not a lawyer. You are, obviously, and anybody else is. Will somebody sue the town if, or you put that flag up, you open my flag up? I mean, there's different situations. I mean, do we need this? I mean, the way I look at it, I'm glad you said no, you should have said no. Uh, my, my idea is, that flag represents everybody. Now, if you're thinking differently, you know, I'm offended because this flag is this. I think that person's got a problem. The town doesn't have a problem. You know, everyone here is welcome. Like, I rented to all kinds of people here and went up to my other house in Revere. Uh, that's it. You get the money, you come in. You're a good citizen, you come in. You're welcome here. But when you start picking on groups and one flag goes up and the other side of the flag doesn't go up, we're having trouble with that. Now, I know I'm not the only one that thinks this. Um, it took a lot for me to come up here. The last time I came up here, there was no air conditioning, there was no zoom or anything else. That was years ago. So, I mean, that's all I'm saying. Um, I, I hope you ditch this thing. It's, I think it's insanity. This guy says flag A is great, the next guy, flag A, you know, we can't have that. You know, and well, now, if he says flag A is great, does that mean it's forever? Because I don't think I heard that in the ordinances. It's just like, it cannot be changed after he said, the current town manager says it's okay? That's all I got to say.
Okay, you're on. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Hearing none, I will close public comment, and we will watch Committee Reports Finance Committee. I'm sorry, is there any correspondence, Denise?
We did have one correspondence from Julia Wallace, and she was for the one forty-seven for the sidewalk repairs.
Okay. All right, I did see that. Yep. Anyone else have any other correspondence they want to bring forward? All right, let's move to Committee Reports Finance Committee first.
Finance Committee met earlier this evening. Uh, we had four items on the agenda.
We had four items on the agenda. The first was the Dog Park and Golf Shed. The reason that was on the agenda was we're still in the midst of trying to find additional financing to complete that project. The project has been authorized by, for the town manager to proceed. We're just in the midst of finding additional funding to, we think we have, we think we have located some of the funds, and we will, obviously, we're committed to the project, and we will continue to do so. And we have continued that to our next Finance Committee meeting and hope to report more on that at the next council meeting. And the other item was the fiscal '21 year-end budget transfers, which we spoke about at the, we spoke about earlier in the evening at the public hearing, and that is coming back with positive recommendation. We also discussed the transfer of $147,000 for capital stabilization to general fund for sidewalks and police cars. We have many questions on that and share some of the sentiments that were discussed earlier with Karen Chavez regarding still looking into potential for APAs money for, you know, it's very complex on the use of that, but we're still looking into that. And we had some questions in regards to it kind of conflicts to what we just did two months ago in regards to the budget. So we have tabled that for now. The last item on the agenda, which we also discussed in the public hearing, was the SRF funding for 9.9 million for the Ingleside Park project. We just thought at this time, we came back with a unanimous negative recommendation to proceed with that right now. We were given a very short window to decide this. We don't have the complete cost of the project. We do know that it is going to increase water rates approximately 5% to 6%, and we just do not feel comfortable at this time. We are cognizant and want to make sure that the flooding in that area, not only the Ingleside proper, but over by Palmyra and the other end of Brookfield, to make sure that that is, you know, we're still having adequate areas for that to, to look at. So other than that, that is it for finance tonight.
Thank you. Any questions of the Chairman of Finance Committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to Rules and Ordnance Committee.
Yes, so the Rules and Ordnance Committee has not met since our last meeting. We have since received some comments back on our proposed ordinances as it relates to the flag policy, as well as the, as well as the solid waste ordinance that we're going to be proposing. There's some changes that we're, we're going to have to make, so I'm going to set up another meeting to go over the changes that were suggested and bring back a recommendation to the council at our next meeting.
Do you want to set that meeting now?
I'd like to speak with Councilor Rogiro, who isn't here.
Yeah. Okay. All right, moving forward, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Council, President, and Councilors. First and foremost, I just want to thank the Public Safety Team again for their efforts last Friday during another horrific event that they handled with grace and confidence and professionalism. Certainly not every day that an incident like that happens, and they rose to the occasion, and we're following up and making sure that all, all our staff members are taken care of. So first and foremost, I just want to recognize that. The CBD schedule, due to some change orders, is running about, is going to run about two months beyond what we thought would be December. So they will be back in the spring, in March 18th date to finish up. Those change orders came at the request of the town. One was on Jefferson Street. They, when they were digging there, they found additional pipe that needed to be replaced, and that was done. And then again, the drainage and sewer on Putnam Place needed to actually be reconfigured as well to handle drainage that was puddling there. So those two change orders are going to add to the, add to the project, but they're still within their time, contractual time of finishing. The change orders come at our request, not their, their delay of the service. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that, and I just have to concede. Councilor Terry was right when we talked last week, and he felt that this project wasn't moving as fast as it, as we anticipated and projected. So waterfront overlay, I asked the town planner and the building inspector, commissioner to look at where we could possibly make improvements and possibly and potentially make new revenue and increase the value of properties along the Winthrop, in Winthrop. So I've asked them to specifically look at the waterfront overlay district and see if they would make recommendations that I could bring forward to the council. I hope to have those recommendations to the next meeting, which then the council could refer to the planning board for a more extensive review and potential adoption of those, of that overlay, additional overlay. I'll be putting out RFP hopefully this Friday to assist with the middle school project, and we'll bring a, as I mentioned, I think at the last meeting as well, a consultant on board that deals with commercial real estate and helps and has successfully helped towns put out RFPs and seal of actual town property. This is something we don't do often, and we want to do it right. The senior barbecue is coming up on 8/25 will be, Fire and Police will be assisting with that. That'll hopefully be at the same location behind the middle, middle high school. People will drive through. Again, we're still not congregating at the senior center. They are open, but we're not bringing large crowds in as of yet for obvious reasons. Ferry operation, a lot of comments tonight surrounded the ferry. I've talked to Senator Boncorie yesterday, and he assures me that Mass DOT is sending a letter awarding us $280,000. That will get us through the remainder of this year, and then again, we're going to have to look at the plan for the future and what we're going to do for the future. So hopefully, our urgency has ended, but the matter should stay in front of us, and we should continue to work on that. They've got the first tenant's report for this fiscal year in. The tenants are slightly lower in this month compared to the same month last year. Our single stream is slightly higher compared to last year, which means more people are recycling. So again, it's not a significant decrease, it's a slight down, so we'll have to look at trends and see if next month holds the same or it goes back, or does it exceed? And there are too much average where we're flat. So we're watching that month by month, want to assure everyone of that. The maintenance shed in the Dog Park construction has begun down on Veterans Road. They have dug their, some lines across the street into that area. They've made some changes within that area, and they'll continue to work on that. So there was a strip of land that has been brought to my attention on Veterans Road on the backside of 413, 414, 415 Shirley Street. I passed this exhibit around. I've asked Council President to mark it on the agenda, and I'll certainly entertain any questions when we discuss that agenda item. The seeker of this property only needs about 800 square feet. I just like to bring things before the council, making sure that they want me to pursue something like this before we do an instrument survey, get the boundaries of what we're going to sell, and then bring it back before the council. So the process I'm trying to follow to be transparent and also have the council support before we go out and spend money on instrument surveys describing the exact property. Conservation Commission has emailed me, and I forwarded those, that email to the Council President about quorum issues at their commission meetings and not being able to have a quorum. There's two members that they feel are not showing up and should be removed, so I put that in the Council President's hand. The Abrams report, they were reporting back to us, they were not getting the meter readings that they were necessary to finish their report from MWRA. Contacted the fire chief, reached out to MWRA. They have the meter reports in their hands as of yesterday, so I expect that report to be finished. I don't, I don't know where the tie-up was there. The CFO has also made a recommendation that I bring forward to the council for their consideration, and that's on our free cash allocations is a council rule on our free cash allocations, and this recommendation actually reverses the percentages to capital stabilization and general stabilization. He feels our liquidity would improve if we reverse the 30-40 split that we currently do, so we just reverse the 30 into capital stabilization, 40 into general stabilization. So I hand that out as his recommendation. I've read it and sat with him. He's explained it to me, and I'll be happy to, I'd like to schedule him for a meeting in September to kind of give everyone an overview before he leaves at the end of September on our 2023 budget and what our projections and mapping and information sharing and data collection has shown us and what we can expect in '23. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you be bringing these forward as motions at our next meeting?
Which ones?
The one, the recommendation to change decapitalization and stabilization.
We, I certainly can. I wanted to get the information out to council. I don't know if you want to refer that recommendation out.
Then we'll have it.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll have.
Even though we don't have a motion before us, I will, I will refer that moment random that's coming from Steve Cirillo, interim finance director to the Finance Committee to look at it so they can prepare a motion if they believe it's necessary. Okay.
Got it?
Yep.
Thanks. Okay.
Just one further thing. Miller Field will return to school use on the 20th of this month as their fall sports will start to begin. Practices will start to happen, so I just want to make sure you're aware of that as well.
We have that under role business, so that'll be voted on. All right, School Committee met last night. It was a very long meeting, to say the least. It was very hot meeting as well. We had a lot of people on both sides of the issue of masking, but it was a very good meeting, and it ended up with the School Committee voting to put in a temporary differentiated policy, which means that we followed Desi's recommendations and the Mass Department of Health's recommendations, the recommendations from our superintendent and our health director, and we voted that differentiated policy, which means that pre-K to six masks will be mandatory indoors for all students. From seven to 12, again, it's a mandated mask policy, but they may be exempt if they are vaccinated. So anyone that's 12 and over that is in the seventh to 12th grade may be exempt if they present their vaccination card, and they would have to see the nurse. There are mandated masks in the nurse's office where people go if they are sick, and they're going to have to wear a mask. There's mandated masks on all transportation of all school buses and all sports school bus. There are no masks going to be needed outside. That is the policy that was passed last night. We found out that there's been zero in-school transmission during the whole last year, and we're expecting the same for this year. Our municipal employees are now wearing masks, and that includes the school department on the, the order that came down just last week. And we've turned at 155 out of 161 employees of the school department are vaccinated. Those that aren't will be wearing masks. And they have the rapid vionix COVID test in school, and anybody that has any symptoms whatsoever will be tested immediately and, and dealt with as they should be. And that was the School Committee report as of this time. Moving on to all business. The first item on all business is fiscal year 21 year-end budget transfers. Do I have a motion coming from the Finance Committee?
Yes, there's a motion that I moved at the town council vote. Modify the following general fund budget to facilitate the fiscal '21 as of June 30th, 2021, closing of the year, or take any other action relative thereto. The funding details.
I think you need to move.
I don't think.
But just what they're for?
Yes.
You know, the, the middle, the second page.
Is 10 funding, basically, roughly 10 funding sources to facilitate transfers to eight or nine funding destinations. These include on the funding sources, the Essex Tech, personnel from the Grants Department, group insurance from the schools, unemployment from the schools, and then a, a list of six or seven special articles, older special articles, and these will be funding items, line items that were negative, including personnel in the assessing office, school choice, sending tuition, legal services, town attorney, personnel and animal control, and snow ice manpower, snow ice supplies, and then a list of four or five special articles that have negative balances that we're just trying to zero out. The total amount is $118,160.15. Funding sources going to $118,160.15 of funding destinations.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Any councils, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving a fiscal year, year-end budget transfer of $118,160.15, please signify by saying aye after your name is called.
Councilor Rogiro. Councilor Flackatt?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Terry?
Yes.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncorie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next motion before us or on the agenda is the motion to transfer the $147,000 that has been tabled, and so we will move on to the, the next one, which is town council accept the SRF funding for $9.9 million for the Ingleside Park project, and that has gone to Finance Committee, and my understanding is the Finance Committee is coming back with a recommendation that we do not do this. Is that correct?
That is correct. Would you like me to read the motion in?
Sure.
Move the town council vote to authorize the town council loan order or take any other action relative thereto that the town appropriates the sum of $9,945,000 to pay the cost of the Ingleside Park drainage project, including cost of upgrade and undersized and aging storm drain, infrastructure and constructing approximately 4,000 linear feet of 18-inch through 60-inch diameter drain pipe, and underground detention system to store storm water runoff during rising tides, a new pump station in Force Main, restoration of site amenities impacted by the proposed improvements and upgrades to an existing outfall and tide gate to meet current design standards and forecast a sea level rise, and all other costs incidental and related thereto that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 1, and/or Mass General Law, Section 29, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to meet bonds or notes in the town therefore that the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 29, or of the General Laws, and in conjunction therewith, the treasurer is to authorize, is authorized to enter into an loan agreement with the trust, and the town manager is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, less any such premiums apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of the bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost by a like amount.
All right. Motion's been, been read. It came out of committee with an unfavorable recommendation. So if anybody wants to go forward on it, they would have to second the motion. Is there a second to that motion? Since the committee is not recommending it, there is no second to that motion. Any second to that motion? Hearing none. Motion is defeated. Moving on to Dog Park and Golf Shed.
Council President, the, that is remaining on the Finance Committee's agenda for our next meeting, which I have a date for, I'll discuss later. But there again, as the interim town manager has discussed, the project is ongoing. It has started. We are just completing the funding source, but we have been, we're obligated to the project, and we will complete it in a timely manner.
I would like to see the Dog Park completed so people can use it before the winter. It looks like it, it's in a good spot, and I see work being done on it.
Is the Miller Field punch list finally done?
We're going to hit that in a minute, yes. Next, okay? Next, okay. Management of the Miller Field and tennis courts. That is under all business. I think we're going to take a vote on that tonight.
I did not plan on taking a vote on this tonight. I thought the tennis courts were already voted on, that they would remain in town custody. The Miller Field, I would like to ask that that be put on the finance commission to have a meeting with the superintendent because I think before, first of all, the, as far as the changing of hands or however you want to discuss it, the Miller Field project is ongoing and will continue to be ongoing until the dog park and the, and the golf shed is completed. So any transfer of ownership wouldn't take place until then anyway. I think it's important that we enter into an MOU with the schools for the use of the facility during the school year, the 2021, 22 school year. And I think it's important that we sit down and discuss whoever happens to maintain it, how it's being maintained, the cost of maintaining it. So I would ask at a finance committee meeting that the superintendent and the athletic director come with their expertise, knowledge, and added to our financial knowledge to see what's best. You know, I, I do feel that the town should maintain the property, pay for the property, upkeep the property with the schools having complete control when, whenever they need it. But I think that's something that it's not imminent that we have, that we're turning it over anyway. There will be.
We have to give them some kind of authority because they're going to start sports in September.
Yeah, so myself and the superintendent, last time I was in the interim town manager's position, worked out an MOU. She hasn't had one since that date. My comment earlier, I didn't mean to confuse the people because I, my comment was only on 8/20, I'd be allowing the school to reoccupy for their fall sports. So I just wanted to be clear on my comment early wasn't to force the council to make a vote tonight. It's just, I'll enter into an agreement with the superintendent that on 8/20, she may, and the high school may re-enter for their fall sports and, and gym activities during the school year.
Okay.
I think that was the intention of the capital assets, to table that until we did have some talk with the superintendent again and also the finance commission so that we could figure out a financial plan for maintenance and.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have a joint meeting of the capital assets committee and the finance committee?
Both, so.
So it's an easy thing to do.
Yeah.
Have the third person on each committee to be there and have the school committee in, and not school committee, but this superintendent and the.
We've already had a conversation. We need to continue that.
Yeah, all right. So hopefully we're moving forward on that and we'll have something done. Tennis courts another situation.
Tennis courts are a separate situation, the tennis courts. You know, we did decide on ownership of the tennis courts, but the tennis courts, they went through their walkthrough last, the end of last week, I think, and they came back with a few minor issues as we had discussed, I think, before. All of those, those one or two issues were outside the realm of the tennis courts proper. There are being locks put on the tennis court tomorrow, which are going to coincide with the same locks that are on the tennis courts at Ingleside Park. We had just, the only thing we are waiting for now, we have verbal commitment that those tennis courts are ready to go. We, the interim town manager, and I totally agree, we want to just cover all our bases and make sure we have a written authorization that the project is of substantial completion. Once we get that, which we're hoping to get by the end of this week, we should be good to go as of the beginning of next week on the tennis courts.
Okay, I would like to see it open. I mean, I've been getting numerous phone calls from tennis players about opening, but I'd also like us to see us have a grand opening. So if you can get that, both of those things going as soon as possible, Terry?
Yep, let's work on the substantial completion letter and then we'll be happy to work on those other projects.
The locks going in tomorrow, so.
Yeah, but just again, we don't want to occupy until we get the letter of substantial completion because we don't, we don't want to then find something that wasn't done and then we're already occupied and they say, well, that was done, but you damaged it, so.
Just for clarification, the locks will be changed, will be done tomorrow. However, we will still have a padlock, so we, we don't have anybody in there until we have.
That's correct.
A substantial completion form.
Okay. Which should be coming?
Which should be coming daily.
Okay, all right. Great. Moving on to flag policy and trash orders. Do you want to do one at a time?
They're still in committee, so.
All right. Somebody said they started drafts of.
Yeah, we, we've done drafts that we wanted to have run by legal counsel and we've received comments on that and we will be discussing that at our next subcommittee meeting.
Okay. And it's same with trash orders?
Exactly.
All right. So we'll put those both over, they will both stay on all the business. Now, under new business, we have a motion for a seven-year lease.
I'm here to do the next second slide.
What is that? Okay, I think Chief Linigan wants to talk on this, but this is our motion that the town council authorizes a seven-year lease purchase of a 2022 Seagrave Marada pumper engine for use by the fire department. The total purchase price of the pumper is $689,996. A down payment of $75,000 was appropriated in the fiscal year 22 budget. The amount to be authorized for financing is $614,996 or take any other action thereto. Is that why you're on, Chief Linigan?
We keep them muted as much as possible.
Yeah, it's good move.
You're muted.
There you are.
Yes, thank you, Council President. We've been working this with Anor and trying to move this forward. About four years ago, they gave me $50,000. We just put a 1987 PS out of service, 34 years old. We rented that piece and that was our backup piece. But it's probably been several years that the NFA or the standards in the fire service and any firefighters can ride outside the piece. With that, we had no reserve piece. We borrowed a piece of fire apparatus from Boston that was down in the station for a year. Anytime that we send out fire apparatus to be repaired, we put this Boston piece in service. We currently have a piece of apparatus, a 2011 engine. This engine was purchased from a grant that sits in the firefighting range, $275,000. And the balance of it was paid by MWRA and lower us taking over the ambulance contract for the town of Winter. So the 2011 engine, which I'm hoping to put in to reserve and return Boston piece, will be replaced with a new engine, which there would not be a payment due to two years, one year from the date. So we will pay a $50,000 that was appropriated for the reserve piece. I was very reluctant to spend that $50,000 because all I would be taking on is some other community's headaches, even if you're buying a piece of apparatus that they have replaced. So I held onto that $50,000. Now I think it's almost three years and we're looking to use that as a down payment. This November, we're making that last $81,000 payment on a 2015 engine, which is stationed down the beach station. If we are able to purchase the piece that we're interested in, all three engines will be identical. Doesn't matter which one you get in, every control, everything will be the same. The urgency of this is number one, since we bought our engine in 2015, the cost of an engine is around $141,000. The other problem, due to a lack of certified fire department mechanics, where we have our truck service in Wakefield, they weren't able to field enough mechanic, so they merged with their affiliate up in Toronto. Or when we send an engine out to be repaired now, it's usually gone anywhere from seven to 10 days, which means we have our reserve piece running firsthand. So again, the truck that we're looking to replace still has life in it. Historically, the Winter Fire Department gets 20 years under anything they buy and we really think it's a great opportunity right now to purchase an engine. We won't have to make a payment for two years. We'll order it, it'll take 11 months to get it, and then from a year of the date that you accept the engine, you'll have to make the first payment. So I really request that, you know, we get this period of time here and, you know, we owe it to the, the men in the community. I always refer to Winter as a geographically challenged community. You know, with storms and everything else, we can't very well be running out with apparatus, which we have done historically. You know, you can only take water in on the driving side, you can't take in rear and take and ride out. We have a 2006 ladder truck, which at some time we're going to have to look at replacing. It was purchased by the MWRA, who purchased over the last 30 years, most of our fire apparatus. So again, I'm requesting the council to move this to the finance commission. Hopefully, for favor, we'll review when it goes.
Thank you. Thank you much, Chief. Any council, any questions of the chief? Hearing, I'm going to refer this to the finance committee to come back at our next meeting with a recommendation.
Council President, thank you. And we have the same schedule and first meeting would be September 7th, the day after Labor Day, which is.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So I just asked to post a finance committee meeting for September 7th at 6:00 PM in the Harvey Room with the agenda being the management of Miller Field, free cash policy change, and the lease for the pumper. And we had one item table that we would maintain on the agenda.
In the dog park?
In the dog park.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, I have one appointment to be made and that's the appointment of Leilani Bernani. And she is a Japanese-American young lady who has lived in Winter for quite some time. She has three children. Many of you may know Leilani. She's been very active in the town. She's worked at most of the restaurants here and managed a couple of them. And she's a real good person and I'm appointing her to the Commission for Discrimination, Inclusion, and Community Relations. Okay?
Great pick.
I'm passing the gavel so you can take a look.
Vice President.
Okay, Ms. Bernani's name has been put into nomination by the council president. Is there any debate on the nomination? Seeing none, I will ask everyone to provide unanimous consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Okay, we'll now open up public comment again. I see one name up on the.
I think there was a couple, rail property decision on.
That's on the new agenda, on the fourth agenda. Okay. Go ahead. Terry, you want to bring that up?
Sure. So the ordinance calls for me to come before council to request permission to dispose of any real property the town owns. There's a procedure in the ordinance that mirrors 30B, but regardless of value, we have to advertise and put it out in two transcript cycles to make sure everyone is aware that we are selling the property. And people can then bid as a sealed bid that comes in and then I, we come before council to see if they'd like to accept the price of the sealed bids. So before I get too far into surveying the piece of property that a person would like and she has shown interest, who owns 413, 415 Shirley Street, which abuts this piece of strip of land in the backside of 413, 415 Shirley Street. He needs only about 800 feet, square feet of it. It's a strip of land that used to be the old railroad bed that ran along a whole Ventren's Road. So that he does, he's not asking for the 4,000 square, he's only asking for the piece of property that's adjacent to his building. I did circulate earlier and I do, the maps that we had really didn't do it justice. So I did go down and take a picture of the strip of land. It's from this corner here up to this corner of his building there. It would not run across the easement that's currently in the middle of that driveway, nor would it extend beyond the edge of his building. We can also make conditions upon the sale of the land as far as usage and stuff like that. So if the council feels it's worth me exploring, I can certainly explore it, survey it. I'll come back with a surveyor's description of the property before advertising it for bid.
This is in my precinct, I believe, and, you know, it's been an eyesore for the last six months with these apparatuses there. And I would not go along with piling with that property if that's going to continue to exist there.
That is an eyesore.
It's, I, it's, it's been parked on, now you're telling us pound, town property and I'm not really in favor of getting rid of that property to let them park that stuff on that road.
It would not be used as a parking lot.
Certainly, they've been using it for the last six months.
And we can certainly make that a condition of the sale.
I wouldn't vote along with that.
I, I'm just letting you know, I'm finding a lot of things that are on town property that probably shouldn't be in the last 60 days.
I don't believe it.
In the last 60 days. So I, I think he comes forward to say, let me take care of it, let me use it, and let me buy it. Other people are just occupying our space. So just, I don't care whatever the council wants to do, it's fine with me. It's more work for me to sell it, so.
I mean, they did a nice job on the building, although I would have loved to seen it stay brick and be historically correct. That was a decision made by the prior owner, but, you know, if, like I said, if that's any indication of, maybe we can put a restriction in the deed that it, it, this won't happen.
I think we could take a vote to allow Terry to negotiate with him and work out some kind of agreement.
Well, it would only be the vote to explore a surveyed survey, to come back with the description of the parcel that he's interested. Then we would have to publicize it. Let the people come in a sealed bid, open the sealed bids and present those bids to the council. The council has to final, have the final say and exception of the actual bid.
All right. So I would entertain a motion by someone to give him the authority to explore.
Motion.
Motion being made by Councilor Honan, seconded by Councilor DeMarco. Since it's an exploratory motion, doesn't have anything to do with money or anything that is a permanent issue, I think we could vote it tonight. And I'd ask all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Well, and so ordered. All right, Terry, you can bring forward something for us to vote on.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will go into public comment and I see two hands up there.
The person with the collar is 05.
Mike Demento.
And don't forget to sign that in person.
You can unmute yourself by star six.
Who is this?
Mike.
I don't know. You're unmuted if you want to identify yourself.
Would you identify yourself?
Michael Demento, precinct 2.
Okay.
Knew it.
You guys hear me?
Yeah. We hear you, Mike.
I just want to talk about the Ingleside Park project and that $9.4 million is not even close to what is needed for that project. That was a Brooklyn Towering, previously engineered project and the pumping station is only a five to 500 to 1,000 gallon per minute pump house. And the seven engineering reports that I, that I have, think that there should be a five to seven pumps, 67,000 per minute pumps. So the five to 500 to 1,000 pumps. Hello, are you there?
Yeah, we hear you.
We hear you, Michael.
Okay, so the present project is only a 500 to 1,000. Okay, so the present project is only a 500 to 1,000 gallons per minute pump, and all the other engineering projects say that this should be a 67,000 gallon per minute pump on that site.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, you guys have to kind of birden out, so back connection.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael. Who's next?
Karen Travis.
Again? You have the floor again, Karen.
Hi, it's Karen Travis, precinct two. You know, I wasn't going to mention the ferry tonight at all, but John Stanley did bring it up, and now that the chief has said that Senator Boncory has guaranteed, am I correct? $280,000 from the DLT, am I wrong with that?
That's what, I understand, Karen.
So that will carry us through this fiscal year?
Right.
Okay. What I would like the town manager and the council to keep in mind, the ferry needs to be privatized, and I know that the town manager probably agrees with me, because I've read his report from 2018 more than once. Because it's being funded publicly for the fiscal '22, does not mean that we're out of the woods as far as the ferry is concerned, because a year from now, we'll be talking about the same thing. Please just don't let this go. Have somebody start looking into, and I know that the town manager has done it already, because he told me that himself, looking into privatizing this ferry. The town cannot be in the ferry business. We have no business being in the ferry business. We don't know how to run a ferry business, but there are people out there that do know how to run a ferry business. So please, don't let this just go because of the $280,000. And I certainly do thank the senator, but we're not always going to have the senator, you know, to bail us out every year, so please just remember that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online, anyone in the audience? Seeing no one else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Flackot. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.